Okay, approval of minutes for the August 20th, 2019 Regular School Committee Meeting.
Motion to receive and approve.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Ms. Carpenter. Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Okay. Approval of bills. Warren A., number 4278.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Warren A., number 4278, dated September 10th, 2019, in the amount of $83,674.14, subject to audit.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve Warren B., number 4280, dated September 10th, 2019, in the amount of $1,034,643.37, subject to audit.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That is all, thank you.
Thank you. MSBA Higgins Project, Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a very quick update. The Higgins Project is still open. We will have a closeout date for you very shortly. I'm happy to report that the vegetation on the property is being treated properly, and we do have a plan to go forward with it. And I'll be honest, I was actually very, very pleased to see that the groundskeepers left the patch of flowers out back so everyone could still enjoy them for a couple more weeks, and then that area will be trimmed later on, so.
Awesome. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Change in school start times, Mrs. Carpenter.
Thank you. We've had this on the agenda the last few meetings, and the last time that we discussed this, I asked how the committee wanted to move forward. The mayor asked me to put it back on the agenda again because Mr. Hockman wanted to speak to it. He's not here at this time. I think one of the things that we need to understand as a committee is what the cost this will be to the district in regards to, I know we discussed flipping things, since we're a tiered system on the bus, there is a dollar sign associated with the change in school start times. So I think moving forward, we need to determine what exactly it is we want to do and what those costs will be. And I know that Mr. Hockman would want to be involved with this conversation, so I'm asking the board, the remaining members that are here tonight, how they would like to move forward with this.
Thank you.
Any comments, Ms. Murtagh?
Thank you, through the chair of the committee, and I agree with Ms. Carpenter. Because of the dollar costs associated with this, this wouldn't be budgeted for this year. I would suggest, we had all the data, and I think we, as you alluded to, making those switches, those would be the most obvious changes, but they do come at a great cost due to transportation and so forth. I would be okay with moving this to budget season because I don't think we can really, I mean, we can discuss it, but there's really not much we can do in the meantime. I think this is something bigger down the road.
Any other comments? So, maybe after the new year, we look at this. So should we remove it from the agenda going forward?
My suggestion at this time would be to remove it from the agenda, and I will inform Mr. Hockman that if he would like to put it back on and discuss it before the new year, we can do that. It's also something that I would like to introduce to our new business manager. I know we have some data in regards to it, but at this point in time, I honestly cannot see a way that we can afford to do this because of the way we run our transportation system. I am in favor of changing it. I do realize that we have a very early start time. I just do not see how we can afford it right now. So I'd like to table it until January and until we can meet with the business manager and see if there are any other plans that we can come up with in regards to the budget. And I will speak to Mr. Hockman and let him know if he wants to bring it up, he can, so.
Okay. Ms. Dunn?
If that was a motion, I will second it. In the form of a motion, please. Table until January.
All right. So we have a motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mrs. Dunn, to table the discussion of school start times until January. Okay. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. FY '20 Budget Updates, Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had two items that I would like to put forward, but they need, I know they're going to need more information, so I would like to ask if these could be put on the next agenda. The first one would be about the crossing guards. If we could have an update on the current status based on what we did with the budget. Just want to make sure that everything is moving forward and find out about that. And the second one, oh my goodness, I'm so sorry. Parking fee, thank you. It was about the parking fee. If we could speak about that at our next meeting, if we could check on the estimates, just report on how that has unfolded, what the process is for students, what the current status is, and if we need to revisit that to see about budget impact, as well as any of the reasons that are related to that. Because I did have a question during the budget season. It was about what, regarding parking fees, that they have to be rationally related to a specific cost or specific reason, and I'd like to see if that law is still in place. Sure. Okay. So if we could have that for the next meeting, I would be fine.
Just with that, could we have the comparable fees from other season councils?
Absolutely.
I know you did provide that when we originally had that discussion several months ago.
Absolutely. That would be great, yeah. Any information, and other members, if they think of anything else on those two issues, if people could just send their questions into you, if we could get a report at the next meeting. That's great. Thank you. That would be great.
Well, good evening, everyone. Sorry I am late. I was at a neighborhood meeting at the Brown School. Mr. Hockman was there as well. So, thank you for, Mr. Arnotis, for moving forward. And we're on number four. Welch School Feasibility Appropriation. Mrs. Dunn, can you give an update, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our vote seeking the council's vote on appropriation is going before the City Council this Thursday. It will be heard at their Finance Subcommittee, and depending on the decision at the Finance Subcommittee, it will be presented to the full committee at that time on Thursday evening. We're hoping for a positive vote. If that positive vote does go through for the appropriation for the feasibility study, that's going to be submitted immediately to the MSBA. And our goal is to get on the October meeting with MSBA, at which time we would be on track to find a design team, an architecture team, an OPM, and we would be on our way with a schematic design and feasibility study for the Welch. And all of the other documentation, the MSBA has been wonderful, asking for various different reports and different statuses, and they're being submitted on time, and actually early, so they know that we're very, very vested in making those repairs to the Welch.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Terrific. Public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak this time? The microphone is open. Okay. We'll go to now, Hope. Superintendent's report, Ms. Murtagh?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the Peabody Veterans Memorial High School Principal Search Update, all I wanted to report tonight is that we had a team of 14 people back in August when we first started out in the process. I want to thank all of those people for participating in that. We had teachers, administrators, students, parents, community members, the mayor. So thank you for participating in that. We also had public interviews with the finalists, and we also recently went on site visits. I'm thinking long and hard about this, and hopefully a decision will be made by the end of this week or the beginning of next week. So I just wanted to update the public on that. The Start of School Update, I'm very, very excited that Dr. Lord and the administrative team and the teachers at Peabody Veterans Memorial High School had a wonderful start. The students are raring to go, and it's outstanding up there. So thank you, Dr. Lord, and the administrative team and teachers. And Paris, so thank you. From, at the Higgins, we had a wonderful start here. We have, I can tell you how many students right now. We have the largest sixth grade class we've ever had of 526 students, I believe, and 474 students here at the Higgins, and 1,468 at the high school. And the elementaries had a wonderful start as well. We had some red carpets at schools. We had a positive saying up the sidewalks with sidewalk chalk. We had balloon entries. So we had a wonderful start. Thank the teachers, the administration. They're very, they're energized. It's so exciting. I also want to thank the custodial staff for making our schools look beautiful this summer and getting ready. Also, the clerks and the central office staff for the organization and preparation and preparedness for our school year. So thanks to everyone. We had a wonderful start, and we want that to continue. So thank you. In your packet tonight, you have some wonderful donations that I just need approval for so we can accept them. We moved toward that. Sorry. They're stapled tonight, so I'm confused. Did you just say the same thing? Okay, so tonight, I'd like to share the following information with the school committee, and to accept from a grateful thanks to Patty Niswintowski, Peter and Janice Sakalakis, and the rest of the Peabody High School class of 1969 for their donation of a beautiful granite bench for the plaza area out front here at the Higgins Middle School. With your approval, we can accept it.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
You've heard the motion by Mr. Arnotis for acceptance and thanks with gratitude, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor? That's a vote of approval?
Our second donation is from Jamie Comier, along with her friends and family, have generously donated 10 backpacks filled with school supplies at McCarthy School. They also provided additional school supplies for students. With gratitude?
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Heard the motion by Mr. Arnotis for acceptance, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor? That's accepted.
We also had to bring forward a grant in the amount of $2,500 from cell signaling technologies to the Peabody High School's science into the forensics. Dr. Lord shared that with us here, that it's blood and urine analysis kits. So we request the permission to accept those as well. It's a $2,500 grant.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Heard the motion for acceptance by Mr. Arnotis, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor? On the motion, Mrs. Dunn?
I'd just like to ask if in the future we could invite the teacher, May Taylor, to come in and give a presentation on what she's doing with that. She gave a presentation this past year, and it was fascinating. So I can only imagine what she's teaching this year in forensic science. So if she could come in, it's, you know, once things are rolling, it would be great to hear from her.
Absolutely. That would be exciting. That would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That motion's been approved?
Thank you. Also, in your packet is a monthly hiring status report. We're doing very, very well. We have welcomed in our new teachers. We had mentor program. That's off to a great start, and we have wonderful mentor teachers supporting our mentees. So that's in our packet as well. Thank you.
All right.
One more thing that's not on yet.
Please go ahead, Ms. Murtagh.
I just wanted to share that tomorrow is 9/11, and we had our moment of silence here tonight. However, not to steer you off under, do you want to share that? Up at the Peabody Fire and Police.
Tomorrow, thank you, tomorrow at 9:45 at the Police and Fire Memorial on, Perkins Street, we are having a 9/11 ceremony. I can't believe it's been 18 years since that event. It's kind of mind blowing. But we will have our police officers, firefighters will be showing our respects, praying for those and their families, as well as praying for our current police officers, firefighters, emergency personnel. So that's tomorrow, 9:45, at the location of the Police and Fire Memorial on Perkins Street.
Also, in the schools, some of our, pre-K to 8, will have a moment of silence in the morning, and some of the elementary and middle school will have some events here. And at the high school, the junior ROTC will do a formal ceremony in front of the building in the morning. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Ms. Murtagh. Okay, written communications, we have none today in today's packet. We'll go to Subcommittee Reports. Education, Mr. Hockman?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I may indulge the committee, and before I go to my Subcommittee Report, I was not present at the August 22nd meeting when there was a vote on the appropriation for the feasibility study for the Welch School. So if I can just, without objection, have the record reflect that had I been present, I would have voted in the affirmative. And moving on to the Subcommittee Report, there's nothing to report at this time.
Great. And I did let everybody know that you and I were at a neighborhood meeting at the Brown School prior to coming here, so.
Thank you, sir.
That was a large crowd, important issue. Thank you. Next item is, next committee is Finance, Mrs. Carpenter?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. School Safety, Mr. Olympio?
Nothing to report.
Athletics and Wellness, Mr. Hockman?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Quality and Standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Parent and Student Advisory Boards, Mrs. Dunn?
The Parent Advisory Board will be meeting Monday, September 23rd, here at the Higgins at 6:30. It will be a planning meeting, and we're going to invite the superintendent to come and give us a good start. And we may have a guest speaker, but I haven't heard back yet. So that, the agenda will be much more, much more solid going forward by Friday.
When's the date?
It's Monday, September 23rd. And then the Student Advisory Board, MASC is going to be offering a training for advisory board members. The date, again, that has not been set yet, but it should be in mid-October. As soon as I have that date, I'll make sure that the Student Advisory Board at the high school knows about that.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Building and Grounds, Mr. Miko?
Nothing to report at this time, thank you.
Special Education Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympio?
I would be scheduled in our first meeting probably sometime the week of the 23rd, and I'd like to invite the new Special Education.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. City Council Legislative Delegation, Mr. Arnotis?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. We do have one item under New Business, Open Enrollment and School Choice Programs. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason that I requested that this topic be on our agenda this evening is because of this year's rollout of the Open Enrollment Program. As you know, Open Enrollment is just a program here within the city of Peabody, and really it only affects the elementary schools, and it allows people to choose, or to request, sorry, to request to be placed in a school outside of the district to which they're assigned. This year, as with every year, people receive the same application, which states that there is no guarantee that anyone is going to receive their placement. People acknowledge that every year when they sign their children up for it. It is on a year-to-year basis, it is on a space-available basis, and it is at the discretion of the superintendent. This year, I have learned there were quite a few problems with it, and people just did not seem to understand that this is a courtesy because we have to look at the whole district and be able to portion the students appropriately. And it created a lot of problems down at the administration office for our staff, which is unfortunate. So I would like to say that I know that we really do need to look at redistricting, and I think we should put it out there right now that we're going to hold off on the Open Enrollment Program for now. People are already filling out the application for next year. And I think we should just tell people, we're not going to accept those applications until a date to be determined later in this year, if we so decide. Because people who put their applications in last September felt that they had an absolute right to get their child into the school of their choice. And that's not how it works, but it did create a lot of problems for our staff. So I would like to make a motion that, as of today, we are not going to accept any applications for the 2021 school year Open Enrollment Program until the school committee decides to so open it. So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Is there a second on that motion? Thank you, Mr. Olympio. You've heard that he had seconded the motion. Any discussion? Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Dunn, for making this motion. We desperately need to redistrict. We've been talking about redistricting for a long time. And while I understand the thought behind Ms. Dunn's motion, I really think that the impetus upon or for the issue is that we have failed to redistrict, and we need to keep the pressure on ourselves and create a committee, a small committee. We've talked individually, I know I've talked to the administration, talked to the mayor. We need to formulate a committee, a small, tight committee, that can tackle this very difficult and very emotional problem, or matter, I shouldn't say, it's not a problem, but a matter, and come up with some options and present those options to the committee and to the public as a whole so that we can better allocate the resources that you're talking about, Ms. Dunn, because those resources are finite. So I just don't want to push that down the road any further. I'd rather have a motion to form a redistricting committee, maybe with the direction of the chairman, Mr. Mayor, and the superintendent, as far as a selection of people in an open period of time by which people can apply if they're interested for sitting on this redistricting committee, rather than push the envelope on the user. I mean, we're in a service industry still. And one of the reasons we had Open Enrollment is because parents, or grandparents, or caregivers, or guardians felt that there was a benefit to their child or the individual they were caring for going to a school other than their neighborhood school. And there may be some justification for that. And we've, as a committee, elected not to allow that to occur for this school year because we haven't redistricted. So let's redistrict. Let's go through the painful process that it is, and we know it's going to be, but let's go through that process so that we can better allocate those resources, and then, if necessary, and if possible, at the discretion of the administration, as it's always been, give the consumer, give the user, the opportunity to make some decisions for themselves as far as what the best fit or placement of their pupil is if the space is available. So I didn't mean to be long-winded there, but just those are the reasons. I don't disagree with the concept by which you're bringing forward, Ms. Dunn. I just don't want to, I just don't, at this time, have the ability to support it.
Mrs. Dunn?
I'll be honest, the reason I brought it forward, basically to stand alone on Open Enrollment, is because to me, it is a separate issue. It is related to redistricting, and based on what happened the last time we redistricted, Open Enrollment will be even more difficult after redistricting. That's a huge piece of redistricting. But the reason that I've brought it forward on, you know, this separate, in a separate area, is because just standing alone as a program, all of our schools are, they're full. They're really full. The Open Enrollment Program was, again, it was a courtesy to families, but it also was to work for us. If we had space and someone wanted to put a child there and they transported their child there, it worked out for both parties. There are so many issues involved with the Open Enrollment Decisions, and I've heard a lot of them, you know, everything from before and after care, transportation, there are a lot of issues that are still going to come up and probably be magnified when we do redistricting. That was why I didn't bring redistricting into this motion, only because I just think, standing alone, the Open Enrollment needs to just, it needs to be suspended for now, because a lot of people are already submitting applications, planning for next September. And we're not ready to look at those, we're not ready to make those plans, and people, people get the wrong idea that if they submit something now, that they're going to be able to be guaranteed the placement. That's never, ever been the case. It's always been written right on the application that this is, you know, case-by-case basis, and there is never a guarantee that a student, even if they get Open Enrollment this year, they may not be able to go back to that school next year because of space considerations. So I think we just need to have a little bit of a cooling-off period on Open Enrollment. I'm keeping that separate from school choice. We have a vote in the spring on that. This year, we did that, again, we limited it to high school students, and that's always within the superintendent's discretion. It's a totally different program, and I didn't want to confuse the two.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Okay, we have a motion in front of us. On the motion, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I agree with you both in different ways. The redistricting issue has come before us year after year after year, and it has just been kicked down the road because it's a very difficult thing. We've had a few plans come before us, and nothing has stuck. So I do agree, though, that we do have to get into redistricting. The Open Enrollment, I worry casting a vote to totally stop any applications coming through might hurt us a little bit, because some of them, I believe, might help us by allowing a child that's in a school that has, is very crowded, that wants to move to another one. It might benefit us in a way. So I'm kind of reluctant to vote in the affirmative because of that. But I did also want to hear from the superintendent, or she can, we can discuss it at the next one, her thoughts and feelings on these issues, because that's something that you're the one who deals with them. They come across your desk.
I'd like to give a report at the next meeting because I have actual numbers for you, and I think data really tells a story. So I think that's important, and I can bring that forth at the next meeting.
I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'd be willing to table this till the next meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and if we could, maybe we could put this item on with redistricting on for the next meeting, and that'll allow me a little time to think as well, and share my thoughts at that time.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Mrs. Dunn. Items for next agenda will be handled in the regular course. I did want to make two quick announcements. Ms. Murtagh, and I mentioned about the 9/11 ceremony tomorrow. We also, this week is Alzheimer's Awareness Week. We've been wearing purple. We raised the flag this afternoon at Peabody City Hall, a purple flag, to raise awareness for Alzheimer's. Pretty amazing stats I've learned recently. 5.8 million Americans suffer from Alzheimer's, and they're estimating by the year 2050, there will be almost 15 million that suffer from Alzheimer's. And now it is the sixth leading cause of death, both in the United States and in Massachusetts, is Alzheimer's. My family's been touched by it, my grandmother. I know probably everybody has been touched in some way, but it's a devastating illness, and not just for the ones that suffer from it, which is tragic and sad, having seen my grandmother go through it, but also for the caregivers. It's a disease that really takes its toll on families, on friends, on just people who care and people who love that person that's suffering. And it's, so this week, asking if maybe we can, maybe one day, wear purple. We have some pins. I should have brought some with me. And just keep those people in mind that are suffering, and those caregivers. Oftentimes, those caregivers are not receiving pay. They do it out of love and support and caring for that person. So I wanted to mention that this week. And on Sunday, we started tradition, this will be the third year. And on Sunday, we started tradition, this will be the third year in which we have a blue mass, it's this Sunday at St. John's Church, 10:00 a.m., it's a non-denominational multi-face, multi-faith mass to pray for our police officers, our firefighters, our emergency personnel, the people who are on the front lines and work hard to keep us safe in light of 9/11, we always think this is an appropriate time to do that, and hopefully you can join us, again, it's at St. John's Church, 10:00 a.m. on Sunday, following that, there will be a coalition at the Wigan Auditorium to come together again in prayer and thoughts for all of our officers, firefighters, emergency personnel, and their family, hopefully you can join us. And with that, move to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.